Hey, thanks for coming, everybody. I'm gonna give everyone just maybe like two more minutes. I hear someone just got here and they said the traffic was pretty horrific. Welcome to Spring Break. So I'm gonna give it just a couple of minutes. We did, I invited Sherri Pierce. In fact, I invited the entire town council to attend tonight. I was hoping that they would come. I'm still hoping. I got no response from any of them, so there is that. But we'll get started in just a couple of minutes. If you guys have questions, I don't mind keeping it informal, like question-answer type situation. I do have note cards if you feel like you would rather me read your question or if there's a lot of questions and we can just kinda keep things moving. But so far, here we are. And so I'll just give it a couple of minutes and make sure that anyone that's trying to get here through all the nice traffic can get here.
Oh, they all live over there. It's so traffical.
Oh, restaurants?
I have a big YouTube channel. I can connect YouTube too.
I was at, we have a path to Peeling Water. I kinda forgot, I was Spring Break site out there last night. I was like, oh my gosh, like people keep coming. Seven people, seven people. Alright, we do have a town council member. Hey, thank you for coming.
You're welcome.
So glad, so glad.
Oh, you're welcome.
Yeah. Awesome, alright. Well, we're just giving people just a minute or two because we heard the traffic is bad. So I'm like, oh, no. Do what? Hi, welcome. We're all here, so if somebody is still on their way, we'll welcome them with the same warm welcome. Alright, well, thanks for coming out tonight, everybody. My name is Bethany Jones. I actually, at the last town council meeting, the mayor gave a little talk about doing things for the community that maybe may or may not benefit you personally, but thinking outside of yourself. And so here I am. I actually do not live in the town, so I cannot vote for a town mayor or town council, unfortunately. I do spend a lot of money and time in the town, so I do care what happens in the town, which is why I've been involved. But I wanted to set this up because we do have two people running for mayor. Sherri Pierce was invited, like I said, she was invited. I actually had high hopes that she may come. I would like to hear from her. The only experience that I've had with her is at town council meetings, which you don't always hear everything about what people are feeling about topics or what they stand for at town council meetings. So I really hoped that she would come, but she is not here, so here we are. Sherri Pierce is on the ballot. So she currently sits on town council and has been a longtime resident of Pagosa Springs, so that is who is on the ballot, okay? Sarah Cole is a write-in candidate, and I'll let her tell you guys about herself. But what I do know about Sarah is she currently works in child welfare and she has a big passion and also advocates for victims and survivors of child trafficking. So that's something that's really important to her, among, I'm sure, other things too. But anyway, so here we are. Like I said, I'm happy to keep it informal if you guys wanna ask questions. I do have cards available if you would like to write your question down and keep that anonymous and I can read it for you. And if there's a lot of questions, I'm gonna try to keep things moving so that we can be respectful of everybody's time. I told the library six to seven, I don't think they close till eight, so we have a little leeway in there. But just to keep everybody's, respect everybody's time, we'll try to keep things moving. So we do have some questions, but if you wanna get a little bit about yourself, I'm sure everybody wants to know.
Hello, everyone. First off, thank you for coming. This is very exciting. I'm still getting used to public speaking, so I may be a little nervous. So I've lived in Pagosa Springs for four years now. I grew up, born and raised in Chicago, big city, big town. Then I moved to California in 2012, lived there for five years, and then came out here because my sister Beth convinced me.
It's a beautiful town.
It is, it is. It's a beautiful town and I like the community aspect to it. So yeah, I ended up coming out here in 2017 and I've been here since. And I've worked around town, uptown, downtown. So I've gotten the feel for it after these four years and I thought, well, working in child welfare, I see the gaps in the system and in the town and what resources and what things kinda need to happen, which I'm very grateful for. And I wanna make those things happen with the community in mind. And also, one of my things is how many people are residents in town? And how many live in the county?
Everybody.
So when I found out that county people can't vote and town matters, it's kinda like, huh, okay, I don't agree with that. Because anybody, I believe anybody that pays taxes, you pay taxes to the town, to the county, you should have a right to vote, no matter what. So one of my big things is I do wanna grow town limits, so it includes more voices, more votes, more residents, because it's just, you live here. You live in Pagosa Springs, your address is Pagosa Springs. You should vote. So it's a little bit about me. I'll let you guys take it away, ask some questions. And Matt, thank you for coming. I do appreciate that.
Hi, Rachel, that's my name. Sarah, I was just wondering, why specifically did you choose to run? And what do you wanna see change on town council?
Thank you. So I wanted to run because I'm very passionate about community growth. I like engaging with people. I think the past two years, being isolated, people getting kind of more and more separated, has caused a ripple effect of trauma. And trauma trickles down, trickles down, trickles down. And if we break that pattern by engaging more, becoming a community, talk to your neighbors. I know I'm not the greatest at talking to people, but I'm getting better. And that's what matters. So I wanted to run because I voiced some concerns to town council and their response I didn't appreciate. I wanted to have a conversation, I wanted to learn more about the town. I wanted to learn what can I do during a pandemic, during isolation, that can help a community be better? Because I was learning awful things about child trafficking. I was learning awful things about mental health going on during that time. And I just wanted to voice those voices because they were getting lost. So, and my goal is I'm just elevating your guys' voice. I don't have any power, I get it through you.
One of the biggest concerns that I had seen over these last couple of years was the fact that nobody stood up for small businesses when all this was going on with the face masks and with the isolation of six feet. You know, businesses were being told that they didn't comply, they had to shut down. And that to me is a constitutional violation of your personal right of choice. And I was very disturbed and a lot of people lost their, and still were struggling to get people back to work. And how would you address that if this happens again? To keep small businesses open and from this reoccurring again? Because it's devastated our tax base, our community, and lots of others.
Well, first, it should never happen. Because our rights are never taken away, they're never like paused. You can't do this anymore. That's just not an option. It should have been left up to the people to decide whether their business stays open, whether they put on a face mask, whether they do what they want with their business. And no, it did not follow constitution and it didn't follow law. And as we have learned, mandates are not law. Most of them are suggestions. And it should have always, always been left up to the people, what they wanted to do. Because I don't have authority, town council doesn't have authority to do, to close anything down in that way.
Any one of my questions?
Yeah.
Okay, somebody asked, what are you going to do about the yearly potholes?
Oh, those potholes.
I know.
Some trees. Well, it's just doing better infrastructure, whether that's obtaining grants. But also, we have hot springs underneath. We gotta get those contained, pipe them up, so that they're not caving. Because I know on Lewis, you know that four-way stop sign on Lewis where it just always caves in every single year? And then every summer, they have to redo it again? But one that costs the town a lot of money. So you have to think in the long run, what is more cost-effective? What's more efficient? And if that means digging in deeper and piping up the hot springs that way? That, and if that maintains our roads longer, that's a way better option than redoing them every single year. So I think maybe obtaining grants would be a very, very good idea for infrastructure, which I want to hire a grant writer. That's already in the works. I suppose.
A question. So I've seen a lot of ads lately on the paper, you know, everywhere, on social media stating, "Vote for this person who's already been serving, whether it's town or county or whatever. Vote us, vote me in again, experience matters." What do you say to people who keep voting, who have the definition of insanity when they go to the ballot box, or actually, when the ballot gets mailed to them? And they're voting for the same thing, expecting different results? They're not speaking for the people. They're, in my opinion, it feels like they're either lining their pockets or there's something going on the side, but the person, the individual, we, the people, are not being heard. How do you respond to a situation like that?
Well, I understand that someone who's lived here long time, born and raised in Pagosa, thinks, you know, people like that, it's a better option, right? They know, they know the town. I've been here four years. I get it. But at the same time, pattern doesn't lie. What's the pattern? What have they done that you have been happy with? That you go, that is great for the community? And I'm sure town council has done great things. They have, because they do know the community better than I do. And that's something I can learn. But patterns don't lie. If you have reached out to an elected official, someone you elected, and they're not responding to you or they're saying, "Thank you," that's kinda, I felt dejected a little bit when I got that. I really wanted to talk to my elected officials. I really wanted to know what was going on and how I could help. And when I was canvassing, talking to a few people on Hermosa Street, I got the feeling that they really just wanted to talk to somebody. They really wanted to voice their concerns of what they've been seeing in town, what they wanted changed. I felt so regenerized talking to them. I talked to one guy that lived here for 18 years. And you know, I asked him, "Do you have time to talk?" "Oh, not really." "Okay." You know, well, just told him, "Yeah, I'm a write-in candidate." And you know, Wayne was with me and there was a condo or VRBO that was built in front of him over on the river. And asked him, "How do you feel about that?" He goes, "Well, didn't really fit in with the neighborhood, but towns, they're gonna make money, they're gonna make money." And the way he said that, it just felt, he felt so dejected. Like, "Well, even if I voiced my concern, it won't be heard." And that's, it's not writing.
That's right.
If you're an elected official, re-elevate your voices.
I notice at a local, state, national level, at all levels with representatives, there seems to be some other kind of interest besides the constitution, besides individual rights. In this regard, what are your interests while being in office? Is it going to be governed interests, where we're creating a lot of money to get into the town via tourism? Are you looking to help your friends get their verboes approved so that they can get their investments? What are your interests here on town council?
So my interest is not government. I'm actually not a champion of government. It's a system and what I'm seeing in child welfare. I'm also a fraud investigator for eligibility. And I'm learning that as long as you go by policy, procedure, law, constitution, you can't fail. That's what it's there for. As long as you follow that, you do not fail, especially constitution. That is supreme law of land, that doesn't go away. So my interests are the people, listening to them, talking to them. Because when you're engaging with the community, that's when you learn what's best for the community, what's best long-term growth, what's best for long-term residents. Because we have a lot of second homeowners, but that doesn't necessarily generate that long-term economy, that long-term growth. It's great, you have a right to buy whatever you want, if you have money. I'm not gonna stop you. But we need to start thinking about local growth. Letting businesses do what they need to do for our small economy and for our people, instead of focusing on outside sources. I want to keep it local for the people.
Why did you say me?
No, no, hold your hand up.
Oh, me? So I have a question. The last two years, I've seen a great need for education in our, specifically our police department. The last two years, being discriminated against and things like that and referring to our police department for help. I see a real lack of maybe education in the constitution and what our rights are. Would there be any plan to provide or require some sort of education in that area for our local police department?
Yes, I would. So a little more about me. I am planning a human trafficking, child trafficking training to the public through VHS, through Department of Human Services. That's in the works. Look for something in April about when that's gonna happen. I love learning, I love gathering information. It makes my life a lot better. And a little stressful, not gonna lie, when you're learning something new, it's stressful. But I did have this thought. I thought it would be a great, like team-building experience if I'm elected, town council and I do a constitutional course. I think that would be great. And if we could add the police department, that would also be great. Sheriff's Office, that would be great. Because the more knowledge, the stronger we are. The more we understand what, again, policy, procedure, law, constitution. As long as we follow that, we do not fail. So if we can educate, get everyone on the same boat, it's gonna make our community that much better, that much stronger.
I'll just make a comment about that. So I've been very vocal about individual rights from our creator, secured by the state and federal constitutions. And I have moved into holding public servants accountable when they violate rights, which is not a comfortable thing for me. And I have had it, people tell me, that a lot of people in the town and county think I'm anti-police. So I think if you're gonna do something like that, you need to include the community. Because most of us are not anti-police. We value the service that they provide. All we want is that our rights be respected. So I think if you're gonna do something like that, it would be good to include the community.
Yeah, that would be good. I think that would gain a lot more trust too, between departments and community. I think that would be great.
I think getting back to the constitution we've done so far, is what, going to teach people and remind them what it is to be an American and also who works for who, you know?
Yeah.
They're supposed to work for us.
Yep.
It's got all, got all wrong.
Yeah, it's got all mixed around, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, it has, it has got mixed around. You're seeing people having their hands in things that they shouldn't have hands in. And that's when you need to take someone to say, "Hey, we need to take a step back. What is our role? Town council's role is infrastructure, social, economic growth. That's the role." So making sure roads are paved, making sure roads are fixed efficiently, so we're not out there every single year. I hate driving down that road, just like, yeah, hey, but it's fixable. It's a very bumpy road we go down there. But yeah, we do need to reset those boundaries of here are your roles by law, policy, procedure, law, constitution. Constitution, everything else. As long as you follow that, we can't fail. So we need to get back to that. We do. And we need to hold people who refuse to do that accountable.
I have a problem with businesses that want to build a new building or move their location or whatever, come to town, want to help with the economy and their business and offer something new. Between the town and the county, they make so many regulations and make so much money off of, "Oh, you need to do this. Oh, we decided you need to do that." I have, over the year, I've been here, here since 2009, in the area since 1976. I have watched this happen to the point that the people say, "Forget it." They just, the county and towns work themselves out of being able to have an addition to the town that would be beneficial. And they run people off. But then all of a sudden, they will let one of their buddies have a building and do a business. I just have a real issue about, I know life isn't fair, but there ought to be, yes, we need taxes, yes, we need fees and fines, but not like our town and county do. And I just have an issue with their, the money grabbing to our businesses. I just, that's, that's a crime.
It is, it is stressful. And there's actually a law that is about integrity, that every government employee has to by law, work with integrity. And if they intentionally hold something against you, they violate that because they're not working with integrity. And that is something that has been reoccurring, come up, integrity, integrity, integrity. Okay, I need to look more into this. And that law popped up and I go, "I know why." Right? It's like when you stop someone else from building a business, but then you go and turn around and say, "Hey, my friend though." That's, that's a no. And that has to stop. Someone has to be there to go, "No, why disapprove this person when they had everything that we needed to approve it, but you denied it? Yet this person over here, who may or may not have everything, let's say he does. Well, he has everything. What's the difference? Why did he get it and that person not?"
Make some fees and fines, it's ridiculous. We don't need to be doing that.
Well, and I think that town and county should have the same, right? We all live, we all have the same address.
Sarah, my wife and I have been here in Pagosa Springs now, but living outside of the Highway 160 corridor, which is Pagosa Springs township. I've come to refer you that way a lot. But we've been here a little over two and a half years now. There's two things that really surprised us over this time that we've been living here. Number one, that we couldn't vote for mayor or any town council member or on any town issue, even though we're living within this community. The other thing that kind of surprised us was for a lot of events that are held for the town parks and so on, it's not controlled completely by the town. Sponsors will come in and are given free rein to do whatever they want at the event. We've had events that have been held with restrictions and so on. So I guess my question is more related to that. For instance, KSUT came in with their festival over Labor Day weekend, the Four Corners Folk Festival, and put restrictions on things. But I'm not so much about that that I'm asking this. They come here, not because it's just a fun thing for them to do out of Ignatio. They come here because they make a lot of money. And the town makes only 3% of those proceeds. And so my question is, with all of the financial needs that our township has, isn't there a better way, since if you would be mayor, working through the town council over, for instance, Park and Recreation Department, isn't there a better way for us to do things through Parks and Recreation to keep those monies within the township? Why are we farming out sponsorship of major festivals like that? And letting that money move outside of the township when it could stay here? I'm just wondering what your thoughts are on that? And if we, how we could do it differently? And how, if we did and that money stayed in the township, how it could be used to help the township?
Yeah, I think that if you keep it local, because we actually do have someone in town that does plan events. The Oktoberfest, did anyone go to that one? That was in Town Park? Yeah, that was done by a local named Sean. He was doing events at Pagosa Hot Springs, and he did really well. And he kind of branched out and started doing event planning. And we have a lot of people like that in town. We have a lot of people that are very creative and wanna do events and wanna do things. We should let them, we should encourage them, because I do agree that money should stay in town. And it should be delegated to improving town, whether that's infrastructure, whether that's, you know, maybe we could create our own little grant copt that people in town, that only long-term local residents can apply for, for businesses, housing, rental, you know? Those options are endless. But we have to give that option. And we have to let people know, we have to encourage it of, hey, we have someone at Town Hall that can help you if you wanna buy a house. You can apply for a smaller loan and this grant can cover the rest. That's a great idea, that's a great option. It would encourage more property buying, more long-term residence. Maybe we could have more people moving in and working? Because that would be great. Yeah, I think we need to outsource, not outside of town, but inside. And yeah, I agree, that money should stay here as much as it can.
That brings another point of that I used to do, the Oktoberfest for our Toledo seniors. And that's how we made extra money, back then, before they had the food program.
Yeah.
Okay, so in wanting to do that, we always, in the past, they had always used, the little old ladies told me, "This is what we always do." And so we always had it at the community center. They started upping their prices. Now they're a 501(c)(3). They're not actually a community center, to me. Anyway, they're not. And they have overpriced themselves to be able to use the place other than for basketball and football for people. And we used to have events there and dances and really nice things, but they overpriced themselves. And now that they're a 501(c)(3), they're their own little entity and it's not really a community-given thing. And the next best thing to that was CK at the lodge would make things available for people to be able to have events there. I don't feel that that's in the community's best interest for the town to be running the community center like that, in my opinion.
Yeah. And I think we need to encourage a different type of mindset too. Encourage more of a, "We are a community. We create this space, we create this growth, we create positivity." And everyone needs to encourage that. Because a 501(c)(3), anybody can do that, you know?
But they made it into a 501(c)(3) and I just thought, so what's the point for the community with that? I just, and it's supposedly part of the town.
Yeah.
I didn't like that.
Yeah, it should always be in the best interest of the town, right? So that more, yeah, so more events could happen, more people can do more fun things. Because this is a fun town, we should do more fun things. We can't, hot springs are great, but I wanna do more nighttime stuff. Like going out with friends, family, yeah.
Family stuff.
Yeah, going out to dinner, going onto a nice restaurant.
Not for three weeks with all the people in town.
I know, I know, it's Spring Break.
And that's okay, it brings money to the town. Like when people come by, I love it. It's like, it's outside money, just shut up and go out. When people complain, I love it, it's like, it's outside money, just shut up and go out. I just have to pay my tax. Just let them come. But yeah, we are lucky to have that. Because the one year they had the fires, the only people that came over here were from Colorado Springs. Because they weren't afraid of all of the fire stuff and, and we didn't have tourists. Everybody was being told on the news that Colorado was on fire. And so, and I've lived in Durango while we had no water. One winter, we had twenty days of the ski area open. And people were saying, isn't it wonderful, we're getting this warm weather back? It's like, no, you don't get it. We couldn't make ice cubes, you couldn't water your flowers. You weren't supposed to flush your toilet except when necessary. The restaurants couldn't offer water or ice cubes. Or people filling up things. But yeah, it, it was really, really a sad deal for the town for the lack of snow for the skiing as well as that summer was terrible. And people don't understand that, so.
And that's having, yeah, our resources are very precious. They are. We need reservoirs, you know, we should have one. But that's figuring out where can we have one? Where is the best way, water rights? And that's, you know, that's something that we can all learn. I can learn it, I can learn anything.
Actually.
Yeah.
So, I mean, you bring up good points regarding being pri-, local community members being priced out of things. You bring up good points about outside influences coming in. I heard recently that it's been exposed that people who are registered voters for the town of Pagosa Springs, some of them, there have been some that people have found that the registered voters don't live there. It's renters that are living there. And so that's, that's very concerning to me, because if these people aren't even living within the state or, or out of state or whatever, they're representing us, they're, they're being able to vote for us. Or maybe the people who are living there are able to mail that ballot in. What are your thoughts on figuring out if people actually are residents of Pagosa? Because it seems like that's a flawed system right now with record keeping on that. And number two, how, how can we get rid of mail-in ballots going forward?
Yeah, I think there needs to be update on second home owners. Because if you're not living here full-time, do you really know all the issues? Are, were you born and raised here, moved out? Or are you from a different state and this is your vacation home? Or you just want to rent it out to make extra money? Which, that's great, but if you're voting, do you actually know what you're voting on? Do you actually know the issues? These are things that need to be asked.
And if this is their primary state?
Yeah.
Or town, town, town.
Primary residence.
Thank you.
Yeah, and if they're not here full-time or they're in a different state, again, how, how do they know the issues? What's, are they keeping in the loop? So that, I think the records do need to be updated with second homeowners. Which ones are rentals, which ones are VRBOs? Because that's important. We need locals, long-term residents that are here, that know what's going on.
To add to that, because I'm actually looking into the requirements for voter registration, you have to be living in your primary residence for twenty-two days. Your primary residence has to be where your license plate registration is and where your state income taxes are going to. So where they're actually allocated to. What I am not seeing, however, in the statute is any oversight for that. So there are questions that you can raise to determine whether it is somebody's actual primary residence, but I'm not seeing any oversight in that from the town or the county.
That's good to know. And then to answer your second question, I like that information, thank you. You should have the choice to do in-person voting, always. Always.
Thank you.
I was there when it was passed, I didn't agree with it, sorry about that. I didn't, because if you want to go vote in person, go vote in person, do it. And if you want to have the option, well, I want a mail-in ballot. Okay, you can do that too. But always keep the voting option open, always.
I had an interesting thing happen today with an elderly resident. And she's concerned that one of the people that helps care you for her is very much a Democrat and she's very much a Republican. And she said, she gets my mail. So she's going to make sure that she gets her ballot, but she will not be giving it to her, to, in the ballot box. That's an interesting perspective from her point, that she wanted to make sure she gave it to one of her friends that was a Republican to make sure it got in the box. And I thought, we're always worried about fraud. And I thought, that is something so simple, I wouldn't have thought of.
Yeah.
But she was really concerned about that, because she can't get out to vote.
It is a concern.
I thought, now that's interesting, actually takes your vote and says the mailing and they're putting it in the box.
Well, that's why it's so important to have that in-person voting. You're right there, you give it to that person right in there. Because there, there are a lot of questions around mail-in ballots. There's a lot of concerns during last election with mail-in ballots. So yeah.
I, I did work the last election as an election judge and I'm very impressed with our, our gals.
Good.
I was very impressed with how they handle everything, how everything has to ask two people. You sign up on it, I mean, it was really an eye-opener for how they did it the best of their ability, except we have two Dominion things that they put into at the end. And we have a contract supposedly for the next two years on those that we could break a contract on if we wanted to. But their mindset is, we have a contract for two years, then we'll deal with it.
Well, that's good to hear that they are doing it.
The organization in our county are very impressed with it.
And I like that, I like hearing that. What is our county, town doing good?
How many do you feel bad about what was going on?
Yeah, that's good, and I want to hear more of that. What are they doing good, but also, what do you want to see changed?
I was noticing, I wanted to see how it would.
What I've noticed from living here between the town and the county, sometimes I'll go to the county and ask them a question, but they'll say that's a town issue and vice versa. Would you have any foreseeable, if you're in office, would you make more of an effort to do a little more communication between the county and town? Because there seems to be a little lack of it. They do get together every once in a while, but it's always, well, that's the town, we can't do it, or that's the county, we can't do it. Would you bring in more communication between the two governments?
Yes, because I think we should always be on the same page. Communication should be always clear and concise, always. Because it's very confusing when you're trying to get information and it's, you're like, wait, I have way more questions than when I started with. So I do think that a lot more communication, maybe the town and county need to meet more often and talk about, what are some common ground rules we can have? So that when people come to us with issues, county or town, we have a clear answer of what to do or what not to do.
Sarah kind of tied in with that. How do you feel about greater communication between the town council and the residents? I, I recently did, Jeff Posey was on the town council, and he likes to do walk and talks with people. And, and he walked and talked with me one day. And he expressed to me, even though we didn't agree on everything, he expressed to me that he feels there has to be better communication between town council and the residents of Pagosa Springs. And I appreciated that.
Yeah.
And how you think that can be improved? Should there be Q and A, things like this, town hall meetings? What, what are your ideas on how we can improve communication?
Well, what I really liked is, I think in twenty nineteen, town council was going around to like local coffee shops and inviting people to come talk to them. I really liked that, because I actually worked at the lift at that time and they came to the lift and I got to kind of listen in and it was interesting. And I think doing more stuff like that in an informal setting kind of makes it a little more comfortable, people are a little more open to talk and ask questions. Because when you're in the town council meeting, it's very official, it's very intimidating, you know? For some people, I got over it. But I do think that, I, I think an initiative should be, town council, once a month, does something with the community, whether that's a coffee talk or going to like a community meeting. Just something to engage.
Would you mind if I chime in on that real quick?
Yeah.
I agree, like, we can, we should communicate more, but like ultimately, at least for myself, Pagosa's a two-job town for most of us, I have five, right? And so, like, the time that I already dedicate to my civil service earns me far less than minimum wage. And so when you're talking about like coffee shop meetings or responding to emails, of which we get a lot, like, please understand that it's, it can be very overwhelming. You know, so it's not that we don't want to engage, but you know, each of us has our own things going on, I can't speak for anybody else, but for myself, it's a time thing.
Also, though, you, you, it might not be a position for you too, though, right? If you're doing it for the money, that might not be the right reason to be there. But we wouldn't even know that you feel that way unless we have that dialogue, right, right here, here? And I wanted to say that too, is like, not only can the council hear from the public, but we can hear from the council, because sometimes I go in there and I'm fuming and I'm like, this is a bunch of BS. And then I can be like, oh, okay, well, maybe if these people elaborate a little bit more, I can see where they're coming from a little bit. And I can be a little more understanding for where I'm coming from too.
Sure, and just in force word, we like hearing from the public, but we intentionally do not engage in conversation, because, you know, you guys aren't there when we go through our six, seven-hour meetings that are like super, super boring. And if we engaged with every question and every person, it would just, it would get to be too much. And so, I, thank you, Elle, for being here. And I, I'm liking, I'm liking to listen and to learn, but I felt like, to your point, I just wanted to give a little bit of defense, because it's easy to think like, oh, these guys don't care, they're a bunch of jackasses and they're doing this, they're doing that. But like, we're people, we're human, we have families, we have jobs, we have all this other shit.
You can't forget the shit.
That like, is hard to make a balance sometimes.
Yeah, but I also appreciate that feedback, because that's not something you really get, like your side too. Because you know, work, I work a government job, it's overwhelming with all the information that you have to stick through and all the laws and policy procedure. So it's, but it is nice to hear this side too, because it is, I, I feel it, it's overwhelming.
Well, there's no glory in it, that's for sure.
Yeah, yeah.
No glory. I want to take that back real quick, I said a little bit, but that, that's not true, right? I'm here, sir, and I have an idea for what I think makes this community cool. And other people, you know, my fellow council members, they have, they, everyone brings a little bit to it. And none of us are right, and we, we stumble and make mistakes, but we're all trying. And I think that's the important part, just like you guys are trying to get involved. You know, some of us are just trying a little bit higher level, right? Not that that's better or worse, we just happen to like get voted in, right? And like, do those things.
Yeah, if I could just chime in here, to your point, I fully appreciate everything you're saying. But tying in with what Sarah suggested, month-to-month events, where there's a back and forth between council and residents and so on, even if it wasn't any more than one or two council members at that particular session. Like you might do it twice a year. You know, and then it trades off with some other council members. And throw someone in there from Parks and Recreation, throw someone in there from another department. And it's spread out. That way, the communication is still there, but yet we're doing it on a regular basis and able to share.
Well, and Matt, my intention is it's overwhelming, even.
No, I get it, I get it, I just wanted to give like the boots on the ground, like this is not- Like the whole coffee thing, it ended because like I was taking time off of work to do that. And then you sit in a coffee shop by yourself and no one shows up, it happens a couple times and you're like, well.
We probably should reel this back into the Q and A though, thank you for that.
I do appreciate that though, thank you.
Thanks.
I was, I was next.
Oh.
In regards to the public service integrity, what that is called is fiduciary duties. And a public servant has a fiduciary duty as a board member to instill trust in government as a public servant. As mayor, do you have any strategy, and maybe this is just something to think on, it's a difficult question, about how you are going to provide a unified front for integrity on town council?
So I don't have a perfect or a clear answer on it right now.
Sorry, because as you, as you know, the public has been trying to hold public servants accountable here for the last two years. We've had a lot of difficulty with that. And so if there's a way for us to do it from the inside, I would love to hear that.
Yeah, I think it's just streamlining that, streamlining that communication of, from starting with town clerk and up. Like if you're coming in and saying, hey, I need a petition, how do I get it together? And just giving examples of, here's an example form of how you can fill it out. Here's an example of how you can pass it around and here are the laws, information that you can go by. And then you can always go to this resource to double-check, April has asked me. I do think April does a good job at that, I do, she actually helped me out today, so. No stress off my shoulders. But so, I myself am a visual, I like to see it. So if there's an example of, here's this petition, here's how you fill it out, I think it makes it a lot easier. And the more like, okay, per code this, 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 and they do have it on there. But it's more streamlining that communication of, if I'm not asking the right questions, then what questions do you need from me? So that I understand this better. Because I think miscommunication happens a lot. But just streamlining that information is important.
Jimmy had a question.
So going back to the time, so I've noticed there's a huge disparity between what town council and mayor get paid and what county commissioners get paid. County commissioners get a living, I mean, way above a living wage here. Town council and mayor get nothing. I mean, you're, I'd be surprised if you-
Two hundred bucks a month.
I'd be surprised if you end up making fifteen cents an hour. But here's the problem, here's the problem for me.
Yeah.
I want my elected officials to be focused.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I don't think it's fair to the community, and certainly not to your family, that you have to work five jobs to serve your community.
Do you also, sorry, do you also have more meetings than the V O C C?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I, what, what, do you have any ideas on how we could resolve that? Because that's not fair to anybody. If our, if our, and I'm not in the town, I would love to be able to vote, but I'm not. But if the elected officials of the town don't have time to serve the people, because they have to work extra jobs to fund their desire to serve the people, that doesn't make any sense to me.
No, it doesn't.
Yeah, what I see is, when it's older people who don't have to work the job, and I'm not saying that's good or bad, but for Matt, I get it.
So do you have any thoughts on how we could resolve that? You don't have to answer now, but.
It has to go to a vote, that, that's the answer, it's a vote of the people. And, and no town council can pass themselves a race. So like, if we put it to a vote and it got passed tomorrow, like all sitting council would not apply. But then if you got voted in, like, you can get in, right? But like, I can't vote for, I-
Oh, so it's only like new people that get elected will get that?
I think that's how it works, yeah.
Interesting.
And which is fair, right? Like I shouldn't be able to vote, or, so.
So to finish then, so to finish, it sounds like the community needs to help out with that, right?
Right, yeah.
And maybe the council and mayor need to let the community know. Like, hey, we have town council members that can't represent you properly because they're working to support their families, because they don't get paid.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's not right.
And if they want to, because I mean, no one has to run. They do it because they care.
I know, there, I would say, all of the town council are there because they care.
Yes.
I don't know if I could say that for the county commissioners, because they make a lot of money. And I'm not saying, I'm not implying anything, but.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I mean, you wouldn't be there if you didn't care.
Well, I think, and I think that's where like that community business does come in handy, because it also lets you tell the community like, hey, this is where I'm having issues, I want to represent you. You know, let's problem solve. How can I do this better? Maybe that is giving town council a raise, so that they're able to focus more on serving the public. Because it would be nice to not have to work five jobs.
So I have a question for Matt, so like what kind of hours a month do you, do you guys all do? Is it all about the same?
No, I, it, I can't, again, I'm not going to speak for anybody else, but for myself, it's generally between, between like the meetings, the readings, the, all of the stuff. It's between twenty to forty hours a month, give or take. Some, some, or I mean, like budget time is super heavy, or when we have like big ticket issues. But if we're just like, there's, there can definitely are weeks or months that are easier than others. But if we're just like, there's, there can definitely are weeks or months that are easier than others.
Would you guys be able to devote more time to problem solving and solutions toward the town if we did pass a resolution to give you all a raise?
Um, I, I don't know, I don't think it's a money thing, I think it's a time thing, right? A lot of us have careers and-
That's what I mean, if, if, you know.
And so like evening meetings and things like that, it's just, it, it often, I think it's a time thing. And you're right with those of us that are engaged in our careers and building a livelihood, right? We do have to carve out time, and, you know, we're Robin Peter to pay Paul in those situations.
And I think with respect to the event, you probably had one, uh, comment left, and then we probably should just gear back to questions.
Well, it was kind of tongue-in-cheek, but I was going to ask, um, if you as a new mayor, and you still on the town council, work together to annex more property into the township and outside of the boundaries right now, would you agree to give you raises if you do that? That would be agreeable to all.
That was worth it.
I think that would be fraud.
That'd be sure. Yeah, the, the incentive is that we're doing something good for the community. And you know, I do want to bring more voices in, more people in, because it's important. Because there's value in the county and town as a whole, there's a lot of value.
So just back to the like, expanding the voter pool or whatever. I mean, I think a great place to start would be business owners that are in the town, because I have personal friends, more than one, that own businesses that are in the town, and they cannot vote on town issues because they live outside of the town.
Yeah.
However, everything that's passed within the town limits affects their business. And I feel like, I mean, if, before we go all the way out down eighty-four, you know, where some of us are, um, I mean, I feel like that would be an excellent place to start, I don't know how you feel about that, but, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, when I was canvassing, Wayne, I actually ran into a gentleman who lived in county, had a business in town, and decided to move in town so he could actually have a voice. Ah, that's just not fair, you know, like I, if, again, if you have a Pagosa residence, if you're paying taxes, you vote. No matter what. So expanding town limits is important, let's include more voices, let's include more businesses, because that's better for, for us as a whole.
Do you know why that hasn't been done already? Do you know how easy it is going to be for you to do that?
It won't be easy, no. Because I think annexing it is only like three miles out at a time, and you can only do it per year.
Town can't initiate annexation, it has to be the property owner that brings the funds.
Oh, really?
And the town, now, now that, that's out, I'm not blind yet. Because, because the way the town bounties are, it's like a, an octopus that just follows the money corridors. And everything else is left out. Uh, no, uh, yeah, I'm sorry. That's just not fair, that's all the money.
So, um, I'm just kind of shifting gears back to the questions here really quick. Um, I've always had a big problem with the mayor having a Gmail account. When you try to do a FOIA request, or COIA request, or whatever, to get information about communication from an elected representative, um, who's to say? How can you just trust, blindly trust somebody who won't delete correspondence or anything? Uh, and then, you know, you're at, you're requesting this information to be received by you because it's a personal Gmail account. How, would you be able, or is there any way that you, you could try to make something where you have to have official, uh, government emails only, no exceptions?
Well, I think you should regardless, because I'm not using my personal email or my personal computer. That's my personal property. If I work for the town, a government job, you know, in child welfare, I have my own computer, I have my own email. I never use my personal email for work, never. Always keep that separate. So I personally, that's one thing I thought about, I'm like, well, I don't want to use a Gmail account, like I want to use a pagosaspriens.gov email, because that's keeping it separate. Because again, if you're using a personal email Gmail account, and you're talking about personal things, that doesn't, that could kind of mix things up when you're requesting information. Because it's like, well, that's also personal, but that is about the town, so it can get confusing.
And that information is controlled by that individual as well. So they can go in and delete, or whatever, if they felt the need to. And that, the IT technician, you know, unless they had like some sort of emerged account or something, they're not going to be able to access that information. So it's, it's a, it's a pretty big loophole, in my opinion. It, it, it lowers my trust in a public representative, um, if ever there, if, if ever, you know, I need to question anything like that, so I, I just wanted to-
Well, it's easier to, to delete, Roger, ask, ask Hunter and Ellen.
Good point.
So that's the way it is right now, the mayor has a Gmail?
Yeah, I think it's important to always keep that separate.
That doesn't even make sense.
Versus your job, I've always had that mindset. So I, yeah, I agree, I think it should, always should be separate.
Just a clarification on the annexation issue. It is an initiative by people in the area who are living. But the decision is either the town council, or the town council to put it to an election of the people. That's how it happens.
Um, so we're just about out of time. Sarah, do you have anything you want to give us a little conclusion?
So I think this is great, I got a really good idea of what concerns are, and that's what is important, coming forward. Uh, and that's what I want to do if elected. Um, you do have to write my name in, just so you know, it's S A R A, no H. But it's, it's important, I like having this, I like it. Because it gives me more ideas, it gives a clearer picture of what is needed. And also, I'm really glad that you came here, Matt, because it clarified a lot more stuff. And I like that back and forth, because, you know, you get to say, well, this is where it is, and I need you to ask more questions, I like that. I don't want to have something that's like boring.
Is there a certain procedure we have to use to, to be able to donate to your campaign?
We can take that offline, Robert.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We can talk about that later, because this is not specifically a Sarah meeting. It's supposed to be a Sarah and Sherry meeting, um, but-
I would like to voice that I am very disappointed that Sarah did not approve to attend.
We have questions.
And that really has opened my eyes about what-
Yeah, we have questions.
Her concerns are about her community.
So I will say, Sherry does have an email, that's maybe a website, but you can email her. I, she is running for public office, so I would hope that she would want to respond to public concern. Um, she was invited. Uh, but I just wanted to reiterate, so Sherry will be on the ballot. That is an option for anyone that's voting. And then Sarah will be a write-in, so if, that is your choice, and you do need to spell her name correctly. So, for, in order for the vote to count, so there's that.
So make sure that you get a flyer, or a sticker, or a button that has her name on there, bring it with you, and make sure that you spell her name right.
So there is that.
No H.
No?
Yeah.
Fate letter. Uh, but anyway, so I am grateful that you guys all took the time to come out today. I'm grateful, Sarah, that you came. Matt, thank you for coming, I do appreciate it. Um, and I think that's it.
Thank you, Bethany, for putting it to me.
Just trying to help the community, wish I could vote.